We'll call this General Committee meeting to order July the fourteenth, 2015. We'll open with prayers, if it in a vote shade, pledge allegiance, Ms. Lamont.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to gather this evening. We're grateful for our many teachers who are involved in training this week and for their extra efforts in learning how to best service the children they teach. As we prepare for the opening of the 2015-16 school year with our administrators next week, we ask a special blessing upon each of them as they prepare the best possible environments for teaching and learning at their schools. They are each a blessing to our children. These things we pray in your name.
Amen. Ms. Lamont.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice.
Reverend N. Boche, would you go on the roll?
Mrs. Aceveda, here. Mr. Campbell is not with us, Mr. Egan, Mr. England, Mrs. Lamont, Mrs. Daisar, Dr. Kraft, Dr. Lewis, Mr. Long, and Mr. Nakosh and Mr. Warner are now with us.
Okay, Dr. Lewis will chair the Education Committee tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Kraft. I have number four, 2011 through 2016 Strategic Plan, Action Plan Update. We have Ms. Lawson with us this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As you...
Are you at a circus?
Not gonna touch that one.
That's right.
As, um, okay. Hi, guys. As we do every year at this time, we come and share with you our action plan, which we hope will involve activities for teachers and administrators and students and parents that will move, continue to move our district forward with regard to its strategic plan. Now, you note that the strategic plan goes through 2016. As we move in January into 2016, Ms. Boche is going to be talking to you about where we go next, where we go from here, spending some time evaluating our progress toward meeting these goals, and then what types of goals do we set for our next five-year plan. But at any rate, what we have for you tonight is a brief preview of our action plan that was developed here in the office and then passed by all of our administrators and allowed them the opportunity to have input on the different types of activities that we will be looking at this year. And I've highlighted some of the differences. Obviously, we're going to continue the things that aren't highlighted, but we will be emphasizing this year instructional goals for schools and individual classrooms, and what that means to teachers in terms of reteaching and reassessing students as we go through the year, because our goal is to remediate any types of deficiencies that might exist for a student before he or she would move on to the next grade level. As you look at the preschool goal, you'll notice that a lot of our resources and evaluation methods have changed, because as you probably realize, the state has now, meaning the State Department of Education, accepted responsibility for preschools throughout the state, and therefore, some of those evaluation methods, and such as the class observation that we'll be doing and required to do, and some of those resources for that new preschool program are highlighted there. As we look over the next several pages at fourth-grade goals, eighth-grade goals, and high-school goals, you'll notice that there is an effort to emphasize credit recovery, unit recovery, reteaching, because the message that we hope that everybody begins to get behind is that it's not the right thing when a student fails a test to just move on. The better avenue is to sit with that student, determine his or her specific needs, do some reteaching, do some reassessment, and help him recover those deficiencies right then and there before you move on further with the course, because all of our instruction builds one unit to the next, one year to the next, and the sooner we can address those deficiencies through reteaching, the better it will be for the student in the long run as he attempts with his teachers to build that very solid foundation for learning. So that's the emphasis that you'll see and repeated through all of those grade levels. Of course, when we get to the bottom of the high school, it's not highlighted, but we're going to continue to work on our Jump Start program that I know we've talked to you about several times in the past, because getting career opportunities, career development opportunities for our students who choose to go in that route are very, very important and very instrumental in helping them feel successful in high school, so that will be continued as well. Similarly, when we get to District Goal Two, which deals with professional development, what we're going to attempt to do this year is make the PD much more teacher-specific and really focus in on teachers' needs. For example, if we find several teachers who are having difficulty in increasing the rigor in their classroom through higher-order questioning and higher-order assignments, then PD at their site will center around that for those teachers, as their instructional coaches go into their classrooms, model those kinds of questioning techniques, those kinds of assessments, those kinds of instructional delivery, and that will be the focus this year, to try to make our PD more geared toward what specific teachers need specifically. So that's the thrust of the PD part. You'll notice on Objective 2.3, we will be continuing our alternate certification program. We were very pleased with the results this past year. All eleven of our candidates are back with us and employed for teaching a second year, which I think speaks well of the preparation and support that we provided to them during the past year. We have about twenty-three people in the program this year, so it has grown, but it is probably beginning to reach capacity in terms of what we can provide, in terms of support and mentorships and those kinds of things. But that was our target all along, and in just a second short year, we've kind of reached that, so we're continuing that program. As you move through, looking at Objective Three, we're going to continue our relationship with Methodist in the School-Based Health Center at Chalmette. We'll continue to focus on our PBIS program. And as you look at District Goal Four, we're very happy to have our new communications coordinator in place who will be able to help us get the word out on a more continuing and consistent and effective basis with regard to all of the good things that are going on in our school system. Sometimes we don't toot our own horns loud enough, and we have somebody now who will be able to focus and help with that, and I think that that will serve our district well in the coming year. So these are just some highlights of the different types of things that we'll be doing as part of our action plan this year, again, in focusing in on and striving to meet those objectives outlined in our strategic plan.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson. Thank you for your presentation this evening, and also, just looking at the Plan 2011-2016, you know, we're wrapping up, and as you mentioned, in January, the district will be looking at how we go into the next five years, but as I was just listening to the information and just reflecting over the last five years, all the wonderful things that we've done here in St. Bernard, even as we talk about the Jump Start Program, and we know that the state has taken on this initiative, you know, statewide, but even when it be, before it became a statewide initiative, St. Bernard, we were doing this already, and so I just look at all the wonderful things, even as we are growing our own with our teacher preparation program and having them to return back for a second year and having twenty-plus in the program this year, it's just great, and it just makes us very proud of the school system we have. And so I just want to commend everyone, you know, for the work that we continue to see being done here in St. Bernard.
Mr. England?
Ms. Lawson, I'm really thrilled about this communications coordinator, you know, because it's been a long time coming as far as, just for us to be tooting our horn. And because I know the school district is a district, and so we're doing fantastic, and we just gotta get the word out there. Really, it's like a diamond in the rough, you know, as far as with the buildings that we have right now, we've got MoMA's coming up, we have the Cultural Arts Center, you know, this is fantastic, you know, the football field, you know, it's turf. It's amazing, you know, this is comparison to a small college, you know, and some colleges don't even have what we have here right now, you know? So this is what we gotta really, really pound and let the people really know, outside the parish, you know, as far as that goes, because I know the people inside the parish knows about it, but the people outside the parish don't realize what we do have down here, which is a truly a diamond. Thank you.
Mr. Long?
Well, it is very encouraging to see that the administration, as they have done in the past, to look to the future and keep us ahead of the curve on a lot of things, and all I can say is just keep up the good work. Very good, very good plan. Thank you.
Dr. Kraft?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Lewis. Yeah, Ms. Larson, this is very important to have a strategic plan and a report. You gotta know where you're going, because if you get there and you don't know where you've been, you could be in serious trouble. So we're proud of the progress we made, just like Mr. England indicated there. We're a diamond in the rough, and sometimes we're the best kept secret. And of course, we have to let people know those positive things that's happening in St. Bernard Parish with the students, the teachers, and the general community as a whole. See, we've come a long way since 2005, when Katrina hit. It's ten, ten years. It will be celebrated in August the twenty-ninth of the good things that has happened, and we're really, really fortunate. And of course, what's more important, the students that we serve are fortunate to have been in this ten-year period since Katrina, the growth and the involvement that we've found of ourselves. So, and that just didn't happen by the wayside. It took planning, it took organization, it took dedication, the teachers, the administrators, the school board, everybody had to work in concert to make these things happen, and of course, that's extremely important, and we're pleased to have been a part of this, and I know all the school boards pleased to have been a part of this and witnessed firsthand the progress that has been achieved over these ten years. So thank you very much for your contributions of what you've done to help that, and of course, Reverend N. Boche, your leadership has been remarkable and has been noticeable, and we haven't, we wouldn't miss that, and we appreciate you for what you've done over this, and your plan, strategic plan, and evaluation of looking back over what has occurred depicts this. So thank you very much.
Ms. Daisar?
Thank you, Ms. Larson, and it's already been said that our strategic plan is, looks awesome. We've kept up with all the things we said we were gonna keep up, and the administration has had foresight into moving us forward. So thank you, Ms. Larson, for your report, and I guess we need a motion to accept the updated strategic plan, right? So I'd like to make that motion, that we accept the updated strategic plan.
So we have a motion by Ms. Daisar, a second by Mr. England. Any further discussion? Please vote your machines.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Long?
Item five, it's an executive item, so long?
Before we go on, could I have a point of privilege?
Yes, go ahead.
I should have been, wanted to be recognized before the last item, but I wanted to take a moment of silence for one of our employees' husband who passed, Ms. Kim Logue, who was a teacher with us for many, many years, an extraordinary teacher, lost her husband, Glenn Logue, so I'd like to take a moment of silence at this time for her and her entire Thank you, and our deepest condolences and sympathies go out to the Logue family. And on a positive, a more positive note, I do wanna recognize Mr. Charles Cossor and the Cossors and the Chalmette Performing Arts performance of Shrek. I know many of you, you all, were able to attend. It was absolutely awesome, and I think, Ms. England, you said something about the diamond in the rough. Well, our Performing Arts Center is just fabulous, and I've heard other people from outside the parish who were able to watch the Shrek performance, say that it, you know, it's like a Broadway performance, and to think that our students do all the acting and some of the choreographing, the lighting, and just put it all together, and what an absolute wonderful opportunity for them, and it just makes you so proud of the students, and again, everyone who helped to put it together. I know they had a lot of parent volunteers in the costumes, and it was just absolutely awesome. So bravo and kudos go out to the whole Chalmette Performing Arts. And then one more thing, Ms., as we know, Ms. Boche has been the president of the Louisiana Association of School Superintendents for the past year, and we all know how good she is, but we got a letter from a superintendent in St. Tammany saying how well-respected throughout the state Ms. Boche is, and that she's a tremendous asset, not only to the St. Bernard Parish school system, but also to the state in representing the State Superintendent's Association. So Ms. Boche, thank you for all your hard work, not only with us, but helping us in Baton Rouge with the Superintendent's Association. Thank you.
A diamond from St. Bernard was recognized for what she's worth throughout the state, and of course, everyone feels good about this throughout the state. The superintendent, as she served as the president of the Superintendent's Association, and she was right in there. Mr. Long, before you go ahead, also, I'll recognize that one of her long-term employees passed away, and she was retired, Millie Joyner, she served at Chalmette Junior, Chalmette Mill School for many, many years, and did an outstanding job as a librarian. She was one of those librarians that she didn't try to protect the library. She had students in there in classes, and they're all the way from math to history to English. She, it was a hub of activity when she served as librarian, and of course, she will be sorely missed, and we wish her friends and family our condolences and sympathies for her passing.
Around the MoMA Center.
Do what?
Around the MoMA Center.
Right, right, right.
Her cat used to get into the abandoned building. We'd have to go get her cat out of there.
Yeah, yeah, she was so excited about that because the MoMA Center, because it would store some materials and be a library of sorts for the historic things in St. Bernard Parish, so she was really excited about that, being in the community. But she did pass, and she will be missed. She, her service did not go unnoticed. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Long?
Ready to move on? Okay, we'll move on to Item Five, Personnel Changes, and Ms. Boche, are you gonna handle this tonight?
Yes, Mr. Granberry has been extremely busy in filling vacancies for the new school year, and so far, over the past two weeks, we have the new teachers that we will be appointing. We also have an instructional coach at Araby Elementary School that we're naming tonight as well, Ms. Katie McNabb. And along with this, with the personnel issues, for your information, we did the interviews for the assistant principal at Raleigh Alternative School, and we will be appointing Ms. Melissa Nunez as the assistant principal at Raleigh. She has been with us for ten years, she started at St. Bernard High and has been at Raleigh for several years as a social studies and English teacher. She had done an administrative internship at Raleigh as part of her master's under Ms. Ginnart and had done a really outstanding job, so we are pleased to appoint Melissa Nunez as the assistant principal at Raleigh Alternative School. Those would be the personnel changes to date right now, and in two weeks, I'm sure we have a lot more, as we speak.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Boche on this? Okay, no action needs to be taken, so we'll move on to the next item, which is Item Six, the 2014-2015 transportation routes, and fresh out of retirement, we can't, Dr. Gonzalez?
Couple of weeks. She didn't go anywhere? She was helping and doing it with Ms. Ginnart, but leading her in that effort.
Yeah, I've been working with Ms. Ginnart, and she spent the month of June with me, you know, to learn, not just the bus things, but the federal requirements, and we're accountable to so many other agencies just besides the school board, so we have to make sure we are always in federal compliance. So now, she knows everything she needs to do to keep you in federal compliance. So I wanted to go over the routes with you today. We are gonna have a few changes from what we've had last year, and I'll tell you what those are. We are, we've adjusted some of the numbers of drivers at the individual schools, because we've had some instances where we couldn't fit everybody on a bus, and we always had to send somebody back to get those who wouldn't fit, and then instances where, you know, we have a whole lot of empty seats on the bus. So we've, you know, throughout the year, gotten bus counts, and we got one close to the end of the school year to know how many people were actually on the buses, so we've adjusted the routes slightly. Araby Elementary is gaining a bus, they'll go from, you know, ten to eleven. Chalmette Elementary is gonna gain two. Davies is gonna gain one. Goche lost a bus. Lacoste gained two. Smith is the same. Andrew Jackson is gaining one. St. Bernard is losing one. And Trist, Raleigh, and Chalmette High will be the same. And that's in an effort that we could try to, you know, be more efficient with the routes and try to, you know, not have any kind of waste, and just be a more efficient set of routes. We are adding four new drivers this year, and they're going to be primarily helping at the elementary level, especially Chalmette Middle, Chalmette Elementary and Lacoste. We are gonna have fewer bus stops this year. To be specific, at this moment, one hundred and eighty-seven fewer bus stops this year, and the reason is, we've been real inefficient with bus stops because we have too many. We are, we've been just overboard trying to accommodate people, and it's to the point that it's not sustainable anymore, and we can't continue to do it. You know, state, there's a revised statute that says you have to give between a one-hundred and five-hundred-foot notice when you're gonna activate your amber lights, prepare it to make a bus stop. And, you know, someplace like maybe the Extension, you would want to do the five-hundred feet because they might be driving fifty-five miles an hour, and you want to give them plenty notice that you're gonna be at a complete stop so no one runs into you. But in some divisions, if we do house-to-house-to-house right next to each other, you're not given a one-hundred-foot notice from activating the amber lights before you're gonna make the next stop. So we are, we always do pre-K and kindergarten as door-to-door, and there will be some changes, because we made these routes on what we have right now, knowing the students that are gonna ride the bus, but we don't have all the kindergartners who are gonna register, and we don't have all the pre-K four-year-olds who are going to register. So you may get calls, because we get them, when people say, "Well, I can't, the bus stop, this paper says it's in front of my house," and it's like it was until a kindergartner right next door to you moved in, so now the stop is at your next-door neighbor's house. Or the same thing, you know, pre-Ks and kindergartners, that we do have to make those adjustments, and you may get some calls for that. It isn't unreasonable for, and the changes pretty much are elementary schools, because middle and high school are pretty much corner stops, but the elementaries would go up and down the streets, and we just have had too many stops on given streets, and elementary students can walk a few houses to go to a bus stop, you know, and one of the neighboring parishes, their rule is two-tens of a mile for elementary, four-tens of a mile for middle, and six-tens of a mile for high school. So what we're doing is extremely generous, you know, for the residents who live here, who want their children to ride the buses, but what we were doing before is just not sustainable to continue that, you know, we're growing too much. We have an increase of ridership so far this year from what we did from last year, and we can't, you know, continue to do what we did in the past. And also, when routes take longer, there's what's called a stop delay, and every time you activate your amber lights, and then you come to a stop, you put the transmission in neutral, you pull the parking brake, you open the door, you wait for students to get on the bus, and you wait for them to sit down, then you deactivate everything, and you start again. Well, that's a stop delay. There's maybe forty-five seconds, depending on how many students get on at a stop. It could be a two-minute delay if you have a lot of students and take a while to get seated, but we have stop delays at each one, and we just have to reduce the time, because sometimes we need drivers to go help with other routes if someone's absent, and we just can't, you know, continue. So you may get calls on that, but it's not unreasonable what we're doing. We're just asking people to walk a few houses away, which is different than what some of them have already been doing from the past. We will still have five special ed drivers, and those routes are pretty much to be determined. The day we do picking, that afternoon, the drivers and special ed riders and will meet with Sheremie Curth and Julie and Dawn, the dispatcher, and they'll discuss the students who are gonna be on the buses, and it's at that time that those routes are created, because we never know from year to year who's gonna be on the special ed bus, because IEPs get done and special transportation is required through some of the IEPs, and that's when a discussion takes place on how to do those routes. They'll be assigned schools, but we don't know who all of the students are yet. We wait until that day, so we'll have the most current information from Sheremie. And we, you know, we continue to train student, drivers. Right now, we have, this summer, Janice Alfonso, the driver trainer that takes the students on the bus, has been working all summer, she's still working to try to get more people trained up, but she has two people right now that are gonna test a week from today, and hopefully, you know, that would have meant that we would have had four people that got trained this summer that we can put into routes when school starts, so that's gonna be a big help. So we, not significant differences, you know, but just, you know, fewer bus stops than before, and just a little more efficiency with the routes, so that's really the main differences.
We still having trouble recruiting new drivers, is that correct?
There is a statewide and a nationwide shortage of school bus drivers, and we have a difficult time competing, because drivers are, their salaries are based on a five-hour day, which, you know, is almost part-time for the hours, and to compete against an entity that's twelve months, eight hours a day, there is a salary difference. You know, if you, you know, if you're looking for the money, it isn't here. If you're looking for the benefits, they are here, and some people are, you know, concerned at different times in their lives that they'd rather have the higher salaries, and sometimes people stay with us because they like the health insurance at a reasonable cost with good coverage, and they prefer to stay with us and work towards retirement, which, you know, they'll get to earn one day. The best thing we've found is to try to get people trained ourselves. We have had more success this year with people stepping up who want to get trained than ever in all of the years since Katrina. This is a post-Katrina problem, this was never a pre-Katrina problem. People, before Katrina, took years to get hired, they subbed for years waiting for an opportunity to get a full-time position, and now, you know, we have openings that we can't fill. You know, we put ads in the page... You know, we put ads in the paper and, you know, we've hired some, but they haven't stayed. Right at the end of the school year, we hired three from New Orleans from, you know, private bus companies that wanted to come with us. And two of them started. One came right at the very end of the year, but we hired her so she'll be with us and not have to look anymore to be with us when school starts. So the best thing we have going right now are our trainers. You know, we have, you know, new, we have actually added an additional trainer to work on helping train the pre-trip. It used to be that Janice could take one person from the beginning to the end, but now we've had so many people that there wasn't enough time. So, you know, we have a new person who's helping with the pre-trip inspection. And then we have another driver that's doing the curriculum. And then, you know, Janice taking them out on the bus, doing the driving. The driving takes the longest time because it, you have to wait until they have a comfortable skill level. And then they have to drive with students on the bus. So when school starts, we're actually going to have to have some people come back and ride on the bus with them so they can get their hours driving with students. And, you know, it has to be a minimum of six hours. But they're not always ready to just be on their own by themselves. So sometimes you have to stay with them longer. So, you know, I'm going to ride with one of them.
Kathy has already volunteered to come and do that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to, you know, I'm going to ride with one of them however long it takes until she feels comfortable enough that she can be on her own. There is no position in this school district that has a greater potential that you can have a fatality with than driving the school bus. And you don't ever want to turn people loose that aren't comfortable because they're not familiar with driving the bus very much. And when you have them with students on the bus and they're having to maintain, you know, student discipline on the bus and look at the stops and they're inexperienced, you don't want to let them go until they really feel comfortable that they can handle everything. So the requirement is to have a CDL holder on the bus with them while they earn those hours. But the minimum is six. We never do six. Okay? We never let people go after six hours because, you know, we just don't feel like their comfort zone is that good after six hours, that they feel more comfortable if you stay with them on the bus. So you can help them and guide them for whenever things might come up. So, and we're, Julie's working on getting two more people to try to come back who have retired, retirees, to ride on the bus, to document their hours and to be on the bus with the other two drivers that are going to test, trainees that will test on Tuesday. So, you know, so far, you know, 100% of the people that she's, Janice has ever taken, you know, into train have passed the third-party test. So we're counting on Tuesday, the final two, that also, that she's working with to also pass their third-party test. But we have, we've been done, been doing really well with the trainees, you know, stepping up to come and want to get trained. So that's a record. Four in the summer is just a record.
Well, we can always use more. So if anyone is interested, we'll be happy to take them and train them.
Yeah, that's only, Phil, that's only going to take care of our immediate need. You know, that doesn't factor in that we still need a whole lot of subs. You know, so this is just to get us hopefully through the opening of, the first day of school. We still need a lot of help and anybody, you know, who's interested, who's watching this on TV, that if you're interested, you know, come fill out an app. The process is to fill out an application, get fingerprinted and clear the background check, and then we'll provide the materials that you need to study and, you know, get you through the process.
Great, that's good information.
So 100% have passed.
Ms. England, you have a question?
Yes, I do. Kathy, you're doing a fantastic job.
Well, thank you.
We hate to see you go, but I'm certainly glad to hear that you're coming, you know, to help out. But my question is this, is that for the special ed buses, do you have two people on a bus? Is, you know, get the driver, but don't you have a helper on the bus also?
Yeah, we have a bus rider on every special ed bus. We have to have that because it takes two people to operate the lift. One has to be outside of the bus, you know, to open the door and put the lift down while one stays in the bus. And when you put a wheelchair on the lift, when the lift goes up, then the person in the bus has to release the brakes of the chair and put that, put the chair, you know, in its place and, you know, secure it. So it takes two people to operate the lift, you know, to load and to unload. So we always have to have two people. Even if we do a field trip, if we have a request for a special ed field trip, we have to have a bus rider who's trained how to secure the wheelchair. Because I'll hear sometimes, like, well, you know, the teacher can do it. Now, a teacher hasn't been trained, you know, how to secure the wheelchair, you know, properly. So we have to have a bus rider who's had the training and has experience to know how to do that. So we always have to have a bus rider on there.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, great. Ms. Isaw?
Thank you. Dr. Gonzalez, I don't know if you, I don't think you were present when you named him across as one of the retirees, when everyone sang your praises and said how wonderful of a job you've done. And, you know, sincerest thanks go out to you because you have done an excellent job being transportation coordinator. And I think everyone around this table, Ms. Vouchet included, all in board members, were very, very complimentary of you and your dedicated work for the school system.
Well, thank you.
So thank you so much. And thank you for coming back and volunteering to ride on some of our buses.
I am keeping, you know, my CDL and I'm keeping current so I can drive if need be. I can come back and do that.
Great.
I did offer to Julie, sometimes we have one middle school that needs to go to another middle school. And I said, you know, just call me for, you know, some of those because you don't have to take a driver out of a route set. You know, when I'm here, you know, I can go do that. So, you know, I told that would help her, you know, just to let me know. And I'll also help with the training, you know, because I am a state-certified trainer and then this past year I became a master instructor. So I will always be on the, you know, you know, most knowledgeable side of what's going on with school transportation in the state. In fact, there's, I'm going to a meeting in Baton Rouge in September for that master trainer, you know, master instructor program to discuss a resolution that came up in the legislature. So I'm going to stay current on all of the rules and regulations and statutes and, you know, will always, you know, keep in touch with Julie to let her know, you know, what's coming down, down the line. So, you know, I'm not abandoning you. I'll still be in the wings.
Good. Well, thank you again and thank you for all of your many years of service. And I know there's one big change with the bus routes because of the time, school time changes at Chalmette Elementary and Lacoste Elementary. To alleviate any kind of bus problems, I know in the evenings that we're having some troubles. So Chalmette Elementary and Lacoste Elementary will now start at 8:40 and let out at 3:40?
Correct. The attempt was to not have students waiting as long for the bus in the afternoon and to be more on time in the mornings than what we have been able to deliver last year. So this is an effort to alleviate that.
Okay. And the parents will be notified, right, Ms. Vouchet?
Right. It'll be going out in the summer mailing for the parents.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So those two schools are affected, Chalmette Elementary and Lacoste Elementary?
Yes.
Will begin at 8:40 as opposed to 8:30?
Yes.
Okay. Good.
And they also will have, you know, two extra drivers at each of those two schools worked into that schedule, you know, to help make sure that we don't have the same problems as last year.
Good. Okay. Thank you for addressing that need. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Isaw. Any other questions? Dr. Graff?
Dr. Gonzalez, you've been sensational in the service that you've given to St. Bernard and more specifically as a bus supervisor. You've done an outstanding job and we appreciate that and we appreciate the knowledge that you've gotten that's available and that you're willing to share and help us along as the years go by. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, thank you.
We appreciate you.
Yeah, we're going to need a motion.
We're going to need a motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Dr. Lewis and a second by Ms. Isaw. Ms. Vouchet, you have a comment?
Yeah, you know, and Kathy was not here when we were talking about her as she's retiring. And I just want to add, you know, one final thing. You know, you hear people all the time talk about when you go to war and how close you get to people in those situations. Well, I don't know about combat zones and that kind of stuff when you go to war, but Katrina maybe was our war. And Kathy was with us throughout that week at Chalmette High School that we were all stranded there with people in need and the floodwaters there. And we all spent that week together and got through it. And then when we came back and putting everything back together and the memories we have of seven or eight o'clock at night and Kathy out there with a flashlight trying to lead a bus with, on streets that we don't have, we had no lights on and making sure that, you know, debris all over the place and trying to get kids back to their trailers or their slabs or their tents or wherever they were. I mean, those, those days are things that we'll always remember, will never leave our minds. And having gone through that experience with her for the week of the storm and then the immediate thereafter, trying to put everything together, it's just, I think, an experience I'll never forget. And I just wanted to, you know, make that known that, you know, when we are talking about going to war with people, she's one of the people that you need with you and that you always appreciate and how invaluable a person she is from a personal perspective as well as a professional perspective.
Thank you, Ms. Vouchet.
Thank you, Ms. Vouchet. Yeah, most people, most residents of St. Bernard don't realize the sacrifices that a lot of our people made during those trying times. We really appreciate all your efforts and your dedication. Any further questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote your machines.
I think you put them the wrong way.
That we have three people who are absent.
The motion passes eight zero. I had to go and flip them. We flipped them the wrong way.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks. I'll be willing to help.
They didn't vote in a sense.
Thanks for coming back. Okay. Mr. Egan?
A tabulation for a renewal of student athlete insurance for St. Bernard Parish School going through the period, August 1, 2013, through July 1, 2016.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the, this is the tabulation, as you said, for the student and athlete insurance. As you all know, this is the insurance that covers athletes in case of any injury that would be incurred as well as other students who are involved in sponsored extracurricular activity. We sent requests for quotes to five agencies. We received two responses and a total of four different quotes. One quote was just a renewal from the current provider of the current policy. We received three quotes from Regions Insurance. Two of their quotes were from Liberty Mutual Insurance Company. And one quote was at 100% of the coverage. Second quote was at 75% of the existing coverage. And then they submitted another quote from AIG Insurance that was basically 100% of coverage. When you look at the premiums, the Regions quotes, the premium was quite high. The 100% from Liberty Mutual was $77,000. The 75% coverage was $40,000. And the quote from AIG Insurance is $56,000. I'm sorry, $58,000. The quote from the current provider, Risk Services of Louisiana, the quote was a total of $38,000. That included a 20% increase of the base rate. But even with the 20% increase, the current provider did submit the lowest quote at a total of $38,000. So we're recommending that we renew with the current provider at a total cost of $38,627.
I'd like to make that motion.
We have a motion from Dr. Lewis and a second. Dr. Gonzalez, pass the motion. Do you have any questions? No questions, please. Vote for the motion.
Motion passes eight zero.
All right. Superintendent's recommendation. Superintendent Vouchet?
We're just getting very excited as the new school year approaches. On Monday, we will be starting with our administrator workshop Monday and Tuesday. And concurrently, we have several other professional development activities going on the Believe and Prepare Program as we're preparing new teachers as well as some workshops in our math-science partnerships and ELA. So at that point, the new teachers who are new to our school system will come the following Monday, July 27, and spend a week of in-service with us, followed by all of our teachers reporting on August 4 and the opening of school activity, which will be that Friday, the 5, 6, 7, the 7th, I think, August 7. And then our students arrive on Tuesday, August 11. So we're going to be extremely busy between now and the day the students arrive. But we are excited to open another year.
Okay, that's all, folks. Entertain a motion to adjourn? Ms. Assabeda made a motion, a second by Ms. Isaw. All in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. We stand adjourned. Thank you for coming. Have a great night.